I'd like to welcome everybody to the school board meeting here. It is February 13th, 2017, 7:00 PM for the School Board of Independent School District 271. Please stand as you are able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All board members are present with the exception of Director Jim Sorel. Would someone like to approve the agenda for the...
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make some amendments to the agenda. I would like to add the approval and ratification of the 2015-17 Master Contract between IC-271 and Bloomington Food Services Association. And I would like to remove the memorandum of agreement with Mankato State University for one nursing student and bring that back at a later date.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda as revised signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And that brings us to the recognition of students, staff, and public. And first on there is Black History Month, so I'll call upon Andy Kubis, the Executive Director of Learning Supports, to come up and talk about this one. Someone like to read that resolution?
Mr. Chair, be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approve the attached proclamation proclaiming February 2017 as Black History Month in the Bloomington Public Schools.
And I do have that proclamation here, so it says...
Yes.
Oh, we need a second?
Second.
Okay. See, we're discussing this beforehand. Do I read the proclamation before we have the discussion? Okay, so whereas the history of people of African heritage goes back thousands of years and includes some of the greatest, most advanced and innovative societies in the history of human existence, and whereas African Americans have played a significant role in the history of the state of Minnesota, from the early days of the pioneers to our present-day leaders in education, agriculture, government, the arts, finance, and international trade, and whereas during Black History Month, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on the rich history and teachings of African Americans and bear witness to the progress, beauty, and achievements they have made throughout our region, whereas in 1976, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of Black history throughout our American experience, and whereas the history of African Americans and that of Americans from all of the world's cultures is reflected in the curriculum, learning materials, activities, and celebrations throughout the year in the Bloomington Public Schools. Now therefore, we, the Bloomington School Board, proclaim the month of February 2017 to be Black History Month in the Bloomington Public Schools. We encourage all staff, students, families, and residents to join in celebrating the collective ingenuity, creativity, cultures, and traditions of African Americans and to continue honoring the contributions of Black Americans throughout the year. And now I will introduce Andy Kubis, Executive Director of Learning Supports.
Chair Oliva, school board members, Superintendent Fujitaki, as a representative of our Office of Educational Equity gladly accept this Black History Month recognition. We, I've said this before when we go through recognitions like this, we have significant contributions by all of our people every day of the year, but it is nice just on one time a year to pay special tribute to the group. So on behalf of all of the students and family members and community members in Bloomington, I accept this on their behalf and again on behalf of the Office of Educational Equity. Thank you.
Is there any questions? Should we vote on this? All those in favor of this proclamation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, so the proclamation passes, let's clap now. And I'll give you this...
It's not as easy as it looks.
And the next one, we have a proclamation for Career and Technical Education Month. Would someone like to read this one?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the attached proclamation proclaiming February 2017 as Career and Technical Education Month in the Bloomington Public Schools.
Is there a second?
Second.
And here is the proclamation. Whereas February 2017 has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education, Minnesota Association of Career and Technical Education, and Governor Mark Dayton, and whereas profound economic and technological changes in our society are rapidly reflected in the structure and nature of work, thereby placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system, and whereas career and technical education provides students with college and career readiness and is the backbone of a strong, well-educated workforce which fosters productivity in business and industry and contributes to America's leadership in the international marketplace, and whereas career and technical education gives students experience and practical applications and technical preparation and provides integration of technical and academic content, thus improving the quality of their education and affords students leadership opportunities in their schools and their communities, and whereas career and technical education offers individuals lifelong opportunities to learn new skills, validated by technical skill assessments which provide them with expanded career choices, and whereas the ever-increasing cooperative efforts between career and technical educators at the secondary and post-secondary levels along with business and industry partners stimulate the growth and vitality of our local economy and that of the entire nation by preparing graduates for career fields forecast to experience the largest and fastest growth in the next decade. Now therefore, we, members of the Bloomington School Board, proclaim that February 2017 be observed as Career and Technical Education Month in the Bloomington Public Schools. And now I'll call upon Debbie Belfry, our Career and Development Coordinator, to receive the proclamation. And you can introduce the people that are joining you here.
I will, thank you. Chair Oliva, school board members, Superintendent Fujitaki, it's with great pride that I am again in front of you to represent our teachers in the school district and our staff who encompass career technical education, including business and marketing education, family and consumer sciences, technology education, work-based learning, health science occupations. The one program we don't fully have is agriculture education, but it's part of career technical education, and career counseling. So it's a broad range of a variety of program areas, and I always like to bring an example of one of those program areas. Tonight I have brought with me Kristin Donnelly, a family and consumer science teacher at Kennedy High School, and she's going to explain a new course that is being offered this year. She also brought with her some students to talk about their experience in introduction to education. Kristin?
Thank you. You know, in class the other day, I asked, "Is there any students in class that would like to come to the school board meeting with me?" And these three said, "Sure." Couldn't believe it, that I could get, you know, students to come do this with me, so I'm very thankful that you guys are here. So thank you very much. And they're very excited about being here. So introduction education is a new class, but not incredibly new, because we used to have a class that called Youth Service Study Buddies, where students would go to local school districts or preschools, or not local school districts, local schools within our district, and work with kids. Usually they worked one-on-one, reading with kids. This is a little different, because now we have a connection with Normandale Community College, so students will get college credits by taking this class at Kennedy, so they don't have to go anywhere to get this credit. And I've been working with the Normandale teachers and coming up with what we should be teaching this class. So the class now has a textbook that the students have to go through and read everything and take tests on it, and they also are working within the whole classroom as a field experience. And so the students are getting about three hours a week of field experience, working one-on-one with teachers in our district, and I think they're having a really great time. They will get about 25 hours of total field experience, and really the whole thought of this class is to give kids an overview of what they might encounter if they should decide to go into, go to college to pursue a teaching profession. So the topics that we cover in class don't necessarily teach the topics, but they're more of giving an overview of what they will study. And so some of the things that we've been looking at is, why do people teach? Why do people choose the teaching profession? What are some pathways on becoming a teacher? How do you become a teacher? What kind of degrees do you need? We took a field trip to Normandale, they have a wonderful teacher prep education program. Students can take two years at Normandale, and they can transfer then to Mankato, and they can even start their teacher education classes at Normandale. So my class is going to count for the introduction education class at Normandale. We talk about teacher professionalism, we talk about students' similarities and differences, we talk about the different types of schools that students could work at if they choose to become a teacher, positive learning environments, and right now we just started talking about philosophy of education, and I'm going to do that assignment with them, so they have to present what their philosophy of education is. And so I think it'll be really fun for me, after teaching after 22 years in this district, to really think about what, really, why do I teach? Why am I here? Why do I think it's important? So with that, I'm going to have the students come up and introduce themselves. So why don't we just have you guys stand up here? I just have a few questions that they're just going to answer for you. Okay, so the first one, if you could say your name, what grade you're in, and what school you go to.
I'm Tila Bonavong, I'm a 12th grader at Kennedy High School.
I'm Jordan Hildreth, I am a senior at Kennedy High School.
I'm Abby Doncavage, I'm a junior at Kennedy.
Okay, and then if you could just tell them, why did you sign up for this class? What attracted you to this class in the first place?
I've always had an interest in elementary education.
I wanted to kind of become a teacher, but I wasn't still too sure about what I wanted to do, but I thought this class would be good for me to see what I wanted to do.
I took this class because I knew I wanted to do something with kids, and I wanted to learn if teaching was one of those things.
Okay, so basically all three of you are interested or thinking they might be interested in teaching. Has this class helped you think about whether or not that's a career that you're interested in?
It's definitely helped me a lot, because it gets me like the field experience of working with kids, and it kind of like reassures me if I actually want to do teaching when I'm older.
It has actually helped me a lot, like, because actually recently, I've been thinking so much about my future, and now I'm kind of debating on being a preschool teacher now. So I've been debating for these past few days, but, because these kids are so amazing, and I love working with them every day that I get a chance, and it's just a great experience.
I know this for sure has helped me with Ms. Donnelly and Ms. Damlow, who is, was my art teacher at Oak Grove Elementary, and now I get to work with her again, and she was one of the reasons I wanted to be a teacher in the first place, and so working with her again is just reassuring that I want to be a teacher even more.
So can you guys talk a little bit about your field experience? I want them just to share, what age group are you working with? What school are you at, and what teacher are you currently working with? And if you can share anything, just something, what do you like about your field experience?
I'm currently working with Ms. Miller at Olson Elementary, and I work with her kindergarten class, and my favorite part is probably walking in and them getting super excited to see me, and it makes me really happy.
I am at Oak Grove Elementary School with teacher Jeff, and he, I am teaching preschoolers, basically, so four and five-year-olds. They're, I, the best part of it is like coming in and just seeing their faces and them going, "Hi, teacher Jordan." I'm like, "Hi." It's such a great experience though. I love working with those kids, they're amazing.
I was with Ms. Damlow at Oak Grove Elementary, and she's an art teacher, so she's with all the students that are there, but during the times that I'm there, it's mostly second graders, and I love like walking in and them being super excited, and then she always puts me with the troublesome kids, and so I get to know them really, really well, and like form relationships with them, and it's really cool.
Last question. Now after this experience, and now that you know the topics that you'll study, if you should go into teaching, those would be the type of classes you would take and the things that you would study, can you see yourself in the future possibly becoming a teacher?
After taking this class for a few weeks now, it's definitely made me decide that I want to major in education in college.
After, yeah, after being here, like in this class for so long, like I've, it's been really great, like, you know, realizing that I actually might want to become a preschool teacher.
I definitely know that I want to do something with kids, and teaching is one of the really up there. It's one of the top things now, after taking this class for sure.
Thank you very much. You know, one thing, they might change their mind, and you might change your mind, and that's okay. And you might find something else that you want to do. Finding your career is a journey, and it's just about heading on a path, and you start heading one way, and then all of a sudden you might take a left-hand turn, and you don't know why or how that happened, and things like that happen, so, and it's okay. So I think exploring when you're in high school and having time to explore, being able to take those CTE classes where you can sample careers and really get a little sense of whether or not this is something that might fit me, is just so crucial, and I think sometimes kids don't have time to do that. So I'm really happy that you guys are all in the class. We're learning together on how the class is going, and it's just been a lot of fun. I hope that we are having some homegrown teachers. As a teacher, I just love the fact that I can maybe encourage some kids to go into the field. I even have one student in my class that wants to be a fax teacher, so that's pretty cool. I'm going to see if she can do her student teaching with me, maybe she can be hired here, we're working on it. So if we can homegrown our teachers, if we could have these kids decide to go into the teaching profession and come back here to Bloomington, I mean, what a treat that would be for us. So, but thank you very much for listening to us, and thank you guys for coming. Any questions at all?
What did you guys think when you had the opportunity to come to see the school board? Are we imposing? Are we scary? Are we...
I was nervous, I'll admit. I thought the school board meeting would be pretty scary, because I'm like, this is probably the first time a trans student has ever walked in here, so I'm like...
And you know, George went home with a migraine today, and he was feeling horrible. But she, he didn't want to go home, and decided to go home and made it here tonight, so this was really important to him, so, yeah. Anything else, anything where it worked out? How did you feel about coming to the school board meeting?
It wasn't too scary.
It wasn't as scary as I thought it would now.
Have you guys ever been to this before?
No. It wasn't as scary as I thought it would be, so yeah, there's a review.
I just, I just wanted to comment very quickly, I know she's heard me say this before, but Ms. Donnelly actually had one of my students in the old class that they had previous, that they had study buddies, and she is, one of my daughters, did I say students? Anyway, one of my daughters, and she is actually an elementary ed major, so I always tell her that it was her influence that did that, so she is looking to be a future teacher, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we need to vote on this then, I guess? All those in favor of this proclamation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, and it passes, and I'll present you with this. Thank you very much for being here. And I believe then that brings us to government classes at school board meetings. Are there any students here that are here for their government class? Raise your hand. Okay, so I'll read this. And as I'm reading this, you can come up to the podium, because we'll be having you say your name and your teacher's name. A requirement of our 12th grade government classes is to observe a governmental meeting of some sort. Things that they may attend are city council meetings, school board meetings, courtroom proceedings, et cetera. The Social Studies Curriculum Guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. You'll say your name, the school you attend, and the name of your teacher, and at the close of the session, or after one hour, whichever is shorter, you can ask for a signature on your agenda from any one of our administrative cabinet members sitting over here on the side. So want to just say your name, your teacher's name?
My name's Abby Ron, I go to Jefferson High School, and I'm in Mr. Garlock's government class.
My name is Sonia Olson, I go to Jefferson, and I'm in Mr. Garlock's government class.
My name is Delaney Luck, and I'm at Jefferson High School, and I'm in Mr. Garlock's class.
I'm Julia Benson, I go to Jefferson, and I'm in Mr. Carlson's class.
I'm Scott Brar, I go to Jefferson, and I'm in Mr. Carlson's class.
I'm Jake Sableturrett, Jefferson, and I'm in Mr. Garlock's class.
I'm Alicia Roberts, I go to Jefferson, and I'm in Mr. Carlson's class.
I'm Kieran Hammer, I go to Jefferson, and I'm in Mr. Carlson's class.
I'm Kai Morris, and I go to Jefferson, I'm in Mr. Garlock's government class.
I'm Jack Tuiltsen, I go to Jefferson High School, and I'm in Mr. Carlson's class.
I'm Jack DeZile, I go to Jefferson, and my teacher's Mr. Carlson.
Thank you for being here, and if you didn't already pick up an agenda, there are those green pieces of paper over there by the door. So thanks for being here. And that brings us to recognition of the public. Is there anybody here who would like to address the school board on an issue or on an item not currently on the agenda? We have one coming forward. If you could state your name, and, well, you've done this before, you know how...
I have never done this before, no.
Oh, you haven't? I've seen you here for the past year, you've never come up and spoken?
Correct.
Oh my goodness, all right, well, say your name for everybody, and we'll hear what you have to say.
Well, as many of you know, my name is Ann Robertson. I come to the podium wearing many hats. Most of you know me as a teacher in the district. I have worked in various buildings since 2000. Others of you first met me in another of my big roles, as a parent in the district. I have three boys who started ECFE here in Bloomington in 1998. However, as a resident of Bloomington since 1996, I am also a taxpayer and a voter, so I come before you wearing many hats. You also know that I have been attending most of your public school board meetings since last March. It's been almost a year. At first I came to support the teacher contract negotiations, as I am a teacher, but I decided pretty quickly that I wanted to attend as many meetings as possible in order to keep myself informed. Luckily, my boys are old enough, I can do that now. Tonight I would like to bring up an issue that has me very concerned. I would like to talk to you about the next round of teacher contract negotiations, maybe something we don't really want to talk about. First, let me clarify why I am so concerned. I think it is safe to say that the last round of teacher contract negotiations did not go particularly well. It was clear to me, and to some of you on the school board as well, that relationships between the district administration and the teachers are broken and need mending. It seems as though many of the same people on both sides of the table will be involved in the next round of negotiations. Therefore, I feel it is imperative that work be done now to improve these relationships so that our district does not have to go through the same contentious negotiations again. Frankly, I don't want my boys' teachers preoccupied with negotiations and angry with the district administration, and personally, I don't want to be preoccupied with negotiations and angry with the district administration. That doesn't get us anywhere. I want to focus on teaching kids. So I ask, what is being done to improve the relationships between the district administration and the teachers? I thought that there would be an advisory team composed of administrators and teachers led by our superintendent and by our BFT president. What has happened to this? I heard it mentioned by our superintendent here in this room once in October, but I have not heard it mentioned here again since that time. My understanding is that this advisory team, as mandated in the current teacher contract, has not been put into place at all. I find this unacceptable. Building relationships takes time and effort. Rebuilding fractured relationships takes even more time and effort. We have lost December, January, and now half of February. Our kids in Bloomington cannot afford to have us lose any more time. The current teacher contracts ends in June, this June. Efforts to rebuild relationships should be happening right now. So I come here to ask the school board to make sure that the district administration and the teachers come together to rebuild the trust that has been lost. I come here to ask the school board to make relationship building a priority for this district administration immediately. From my perspective as a teacher and a parent, I believe we as a district can do so much better for the kids and families of our district. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We typically don't respond, but we will follow up as we can, as we're able. Thank you. And that, any other comments? Oh, yeah, is there anybody else? I didn't see anyone else coming up, coming forward. Okay, so that brings us to Part A on our agenda, if I'm following along correctly. Would someone like to move Part A, which includes our board business field trips contracts?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Part A? Okay. All those in favor of approving Part A signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, Part A is approved, and we will then move on to Part B, and as revised, our first item on here will be approval and ratification of the 2015-2017 Master Contract between Independent School District Number 271, Bloomington, Minnesota, and Bloomington Food Service Association.
Chair? Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approve and ratify the 2015-2017 Master Contract between Independent School District 271, Bloomington, Minnesota, and the Bloomington Food Service Association.
Second.
I'm going to bring up our Director of Human Resources, Mary Burrows, and if you'd like to introduce...
Do you want us to move over there? Chair Oliva, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the school board, this is the food association negotiation team and the group that bargained, and you met Joel the other night, he's also works with clerical, and we wanted to come forward as a team to say that we have successfully bargained the agreement. I don't know if you guys would like to say anything before I go through the terms?
Yeah, go ahead and introduce yourselves.
I'm Wendy Andrews, I'm cook manager at Value Middle School.
Lori Torborg, cook manager, Oak Grove Elementary.
Michelle Martin, cook manager, Kennedy High School.
Joan Hubbard, cook manager, Westwood Elementary.
I'm Joel Button of Rollins Martin Button, and we manage the contracts for the clerical unit here, and most recently, the food service, and this is important... And this is an important step for the food service, and we're really glad to be a part of their team. And we had a very good, difficult, challenging negotiation, but we all came through just fine. And we want to thank the district for its involvement in it.
I have nothing to add. My name's Ron Rollins. I'm an attorney. He's my partner, as is Zady Martin. And we've been in the district since the Gene Rucker days with the clerical unit. Thanks.
Okay. And I will add, it is, as we all know, it has been a very difficult negotiation. I feel like this is like really low.
You can move it up. You can move it.
I hate mics. I think you all, I think you all know personally, I have an aversion to mics, so bear with me. It has been a difficult negotiation season, but I do appreciate the candid conversations that we were able to have at the table and try to work together to find solutions on solving some of the things that we discussed. So I'll go over the outline of what we have agreed. So the tentative agreement includes wage and schedule improvements of 1.5 percent, steps one through six, 2015-2016, and 1.2 percent for steps 1.1 through six for 2016 to '27. The contract also includes retro pay. In addition, the tentative agreement includes increases to longevity pay, an additional five cents to each longevity step for '16-'17 contract year. We did remove the additional minimum hours per year for health insurance, and we're just going off the average hours per week. We also agreed to, the previously agreed to, out-of-network, out-of-pocket maximums for health insurance that the Health Insurance Committee does support and approve. We did update the sick leave use, updated to reflect changes in care of relatives, safety and pregnancy leave that have gone into statute during the time of the contract. We added an MOU regarding meet and confer and set the first topic, so we'll be setting that up soon, I assume. And then we added and changed the housekeeping items. So with that, I'd like to recommend approval of this contract.
Any additional questions? For questions?
Yep.
Ms. Chair. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone for coming, and a thank you for the conversation at the table. I understand that it took some, some, some good conversation. I appreciate the energy and the effort that went into it. I also want to say that as a volunteer, I cut my teeth, if you will. As a food server, I volunteered to serve every Wednesday for five years at Normandale Hills Elementary with Patty and Carla and Linda. And I see, I saw every Wednesday for five years, the energy and the effort that goes into making sure that our kids have what they need, that they, that they try to eat something, that you do the best you can to put something on their tray for them. And when somebody spills, you're right there to clean it up and say, it's okay, here's something more. However, you ran into, in me, you ran into somebody who was financially stingy. I don't know if you've been keeping track over the last contracts that have come before the board, but I voted no on anything that exceeded one and one. That was my threshold. So I didn't want to play favorites. I know that the chair isn't asking for votes now, but so everybody can understand and you can hear, at least I'm staying consistent. My vote, when it comes to me, will be no. I wish that I could separate the financial component from the rest of it and vote two different ways, but I can't. So I hope that's enough explanation that you'll understand why I'm voting the way I am. But again, I appreciate everything that you do and every day that you do it.
Okay, is there anything else? We'll do, we'll call, we'll start over here with Director Stegoff.
Yes.
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 No.
Passes, well, I guess, five to one. Thank you very much for all of your hard work, and we'll get started again here, what, in three months, right? Thirty days? All right, thank you. And that brings us to a personal growth plan update. And we have Andy Coopas. I also have, is Cheryl Martin also here? Okay.
Hello.
Hello. Chair Oliva, Superintendent Fujitaki, school board members, we're excited to be in front of you today to give you a personal growth plan update. For you, just a quick historical refresher, Learning Support says this is the second year that we've had the, what we refer to colloquially as the PGP. It was interesting that Kristin Donnelly was just before us talking about students about exploring careers, making sure that they have the ability to try different things. And I think if I could encapsulate what the PGP is, it provides the structure to educate our kids and our families about careers and what they might want to do, and then allow them the opportunity to do, have a structured way to do that exploration, a way that they understand what it means to choose a career or to go to school to do some college stuff. But this tool for every student in Bloomington is very, very powerful. We're excited about the work that's being done. And I'll introduce Cheryl Martin, who works with me in Learning Support, and she is our PGP developmental specialist, and I'll turn it over to her.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to come and share my, our work. I will say our work, because there's many people that have been involved in building this process. I'm going to begin just by giving you a quick review of personal growth plans as they were established, that there's three major elements to each student's personal growth plans, and that's academic indicators, life and social skills, and college and career planning. So as we're building the personal growth plans for students, we're incorporating all three of these elements into students' plans. Some are more advanced than others, as we're, you know, still in the process of building. A few highlights from 2015-16. As you may recall, PGP activities were piloted in the high schools last year, in the spring of the year, and there was some feedback received from the ninth grade students that participated in the activities. And 74% of the students reported that going through the activities really helped them to gain a better understanding of their interests and their strengths. And 94% of ninth grade students reported an interest in learning more about making plans for post-high school. So as students are beginning to explore careers, as Kristin's students are beginning to explore the education career, it gives them an opportunity to really think about their interests, their strengths, and actually have an experiential learning opportunity that allows them to get a feel for whether they might truly want to pursue a major in that area, as well as pursue a career in that field. Having that experiential learning opportunity helps them a lot. So the PGP activities will help guide them into choosing some opportunities, choosing some careers that they potentially might want to explore a little bit deeper through career exploration or opportunities within our community. This year, with the help of the PGP implementers at each high school, we have been implementing activity-based or advisory-based activities, grade-specific, so geared at topics that are specific to where students are developmentally. So ninth grade activities look quite different than the senior activities. Throughout the year, there will be 12 activities for each grade. So far, we've had eight. We've incorporated the registration process into the personal growth plan activities as well. The activities are designed to be student-centered, so students have the opportunity to explore careers and colleges of interest, as well as learn about how to navigate the college application process. And I just read some research recently about parents and families' biggest concern over that college application and entry process is financial. How will we pay for college? And so there are a number of activities as a part of personal growth plans that also help students to really understand the opportunities that they can have for financial aid for going to college. Incorporated in the personal growth plan implementation is an opportunity for students and staff to be able to monitor their progress, and we've been working very hard for continuous improvement throughout. Our teachers have given us a lot of feedback that they've received from students, and students have had the opportunity as well to give us feedback. So we're trying to work to improve the student experience and make the activities more engaging and relevant for students. We also, this fall, in early November, implemented a tool called Naviance Family Connection. And Naviance is a career and college assessment and research tool. It has a wonderful interface for students, and it allows students to use a tool called Success Planner. And we're able to implement all the instruction in the Success Planner. So it's like a learning management tool that allows students to be able to, although many of them do the activities right in their advisory classes, actually participate in the activities anywhere, anytime. So if they miss an advisory or they're in PSE, excuse me, in PSEO, or aren't, you know, able to do the activity or complete the activity during advisory, they can do it at home or during another class or after school. I wanted to just share with you a quick video that we put together for students to give you, just so you can get a glimpse of what the Naviance interface looks like for students. See, I don't know if I, can I start this? Can you start the video for me? It's, it's, oops. It's, well, I...
Whoa.
Let's see.
Want to play? We'll just talk about what the video is.
Okay, yeah. So the, we'll just talk about the video. The video actually just shows that there's four major tabs within the tool. The first is College Research tab. The second is a Career Research tab. So the College tab is, one of the highlights is something called Supermatch, which allows students to compare different college options and actually search for colleges based on a variety of criteria. So they can really narrow down their search, and they can actually lay out, you know, and select three, two or three colleges and lay them out side by side and compare on all the, a variety of criteria, like where they're located, cost, you know, programs that are offered, majors that are offered, and a variety of other things. The Career tab has, has the opportunity for students to do career assessments, and we actually have it planned out so that students will do an assessment each year, a career assessment, from eighth grade through 11th grade. And what those assessments do is they really give students an opportunity to self-reflect, think about what they like, what they're good at, what's important to them. And then what it does is it actually matches their personality and their strengths to careers that might be a good fit for them. And they can take that information and explore within the tool and learn more about those, those careers. Learn more from the perspective of what would a career, or what would a college program of study look like to achieve those, to achieve that career? What would the salary look like? What would I do on a day-to-day basis? So a lot of tools that really help them to learn more about a career. Additionally, I mentioned the Success Planner tool. It's called My Planner, and it actually houses all of the activities that they are assigned for PGP activities. So we assign the activities out, and the students can see their progress and what needs to be done. They get an email every time an activity is assigned, so it notifies them. And then the last tool is something called My, My, I'm sorry. I've looked at it a million times. But it's essentially a portfolio of all of their work. So you can actually go into that portfolio, and you can click on the portfolio button, and you can see everything about all the work that that student has done. You can see what their career assessments show and what careers that they've liked. That information will then be, it's, and we kind of look at it as sort of their workbook as they're doing all their research and gathering information. And then the information from that will help them to actually finalize their personal growth plans in the hub so that, you know, they're, they're working towards a goal. So it's a, it's a developmental process, and it's a work in progress for students. It's really added, it's, it's really streamlined things for students, and it's just created a much nicer student experience by having Naviance, so. We are also moving forward on middle school personal growth plans because, and what we've done this fall is we started with staff, giving them an introduction to personal growth plans and explaining what they are. And we've been spending some time doing some research and planning for a spring pilot. So this spring, we will be piloting two activities at each middle school per grade, so a total of six activities that we're building. The students will have an opportunity to learn about personal growth plans in the first activity and actually hear the college and career stories of their advisory teachers, so they'll have role models, and they'll learn a little bit more about that process. Middle school implementation will look a little different next year because it'll be a combination of counselor-led, teacher-led, as well as some activities that'll be embedded in courses. And then in May, we'll be finalizing our plans for full implementation next year at the middle school. Why start at the middle school? Some people have asked that question, and I started really early on digging into that, trying to find some research that backed that. There's definitely research that shows that there's positive relationships between future vision and goals and engagement and academic performance. So helping kids to see the relevance of what they're learning in the classroom and how it will apply to their future goals is an important task. We've been working with a developmental model that was developed by some folks at Harvard Education, College of Education, and we, we really feel that this model has relevance, and there's a lot of research that backs it up about helping kids to, working with kids and helping kids, meeting them where they are. So that first process for students, as they're working, as they're moving through adolescence, is to help them envision possibilities. What are the possibilities? What are the careers I could have? What are the colleges I could potentially attend? And then believing in the ability to succeed, so believing that they can achieve those goals. And then aiming for relevant goals, goals that are a good fit for their personality, their background, their academic abilities. And then the next step is really planning and organizing and working on their self-regulation, which are more probably going to be happening at the high school level, where they're really able to refine their plans more through experience. And then this last step is marshaling internal and external, so finding that support system to help them achieve those, their goals. The personal growth plans are really designed to help them navigate through that entire process. So it's exciting to start earlier with middle school students and, and think about the opportunities and how, as they move on through high school, how more, how much farther or more mature in the process that they will be. One more video. Darn.
This is a really good video.
Yeah. We created a middle school video that, that we'll share with the students, and it incorporates that model to help them see that it's important to really be thinking, be envisioning your future and working towards it. So perhaps we can share that with you.
It works in our PowerPoint.
Yeah, if you click on it, it should go to the link, and you can play, play it off of YouTube, or whatever this is. I think it's YouTube.
Yeah, it's not live on...
It's not on here, though.
On this version.
Can you click right on that slide now?
If you click on the picture, it should bring up another link.
Does that mouse work? There you go.
Here we go.
Oh, yay. Just click on the play button in the middle.
Bloomington Public Schools is pleased to provide you with the opportunity to develop your personal growth plan. What is a personal growth plan? A personal growth plan, also known as a PGP, is a set of activities and measurements that will help you to develop realistic goals and action steps to achieve these goals. Personal growth plans will help you to improve your academic skills, build life and social skills, and be ready for additional education and career opportunities after high school. The personal growth plan activities are designed to guide you one step at a time. Personal growth plan activities will help you to envision your future self, your college self, your career self. By participating in personal growth plan activities, you will develop your belief that you can achieve anything you are willing to work for. Personal growth plan activities will help you to aim for relevant and achievable goals and to see that your effort will impact your growth. As you complete your personal growth plan activities, you will become a better student, a more organized student, by uncovering your personal learning style and developing planning and organizational skills, as well as self-discipline skills. With the help of your family's, teachers', counselors', and personal growth plan activities, you will connect to the resources that are available in your school and community that can... that can help you navigate the process of career and post-secondary college planning. Personal growth plans are an important element in your middle school and high school education. Be sure to take full advantage of this great opportunity so you can find and explore options that will help you to achieve your greatest goals.
Created using Powtoon.
Little commercial. And we had a couple of middle school students test drive it, so to make sure that they could understand what, what the message of the video was, and got some good feedback from them, too, so. Yeah, I think that's all we have this evening. Do you have any questions for us?
Since you guys figured out how to use the video, do you want to go back and show the other video? Because I know these things take time to make, and it's a lot of effort, so.
Sure.
Nice to see it.
It'll definitely give you a feel for Naviance. Thank you. About me, that's what the tab was called, with the portfolio. There you go.
That's really why I wanted, I just wanted to hear that.
My favorite part is the plane taking off now. Yeah. Any questions?
Yeah, just a quick comment. Both of our sons are at Kennedy now, and it's, it's not lost on me that when their, when my sons come home and say, "My counselor thinks I can do this." And they know I can do this, and they've said, "You should try this." I just sort of have to swallow that and smile because it's something that moms and dads say, but it goes in one ear and out the other when moms and dads say it. But when someone, an adult on campus at school, whether it's middle school or high school, says it, it resonates and it has a different meaning for these kids. And I think that what you're saying and what you're sharing with these kids really does hit home, and it is making an impact. So we see, excuse me, we see it at home. I'm used to my sons just shaking their heads at me, saying, "You don't know what you're talking about." But when the same thing comes out of someone at school, "Dad, they think I can do this, and I'm going to sign up for it, and I should really do this." So anecdotally, you have some feedback from one parent if you're not getting feedback from others.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, question. Thank you for being here tonight and for bringing this very helpful information. The Personal Growth Plan looks like a, like a very, very useful type of tool for our students to be successful and to really kind of help them figure out where they're going towards the end of their, of their school, high school career. But, you know, it looks great, but then when you put it in practice, here's where my, my question is. How, what kind of feedback, first of all, what kind of feedback do you hear, do you get from our students about how helpful do they find this kind of, of plan? You know, do you hear from our students? Do you hear them saying, "Yes, this is really helping me realize and know where my strengths are and where I'm heading to once I graduate. I know I got to figure it out, I know where I'm going." So that's my first thing. The second one, our students are under a lot of pressure, especially towards the end of high school, where they have so many different things that they're supposed to learn. There's really no time, teachers have no time, right? You have to meet a whole bunch of expectations and mandates and testing and this and that. And then they have the pressure of, "I have to do something with my life once I'm done." So how, how do you help students be successful towards the end? Or how do you sort of identify which students are not being as successful? You know, because some might be very successful towards the end. You know, great grades, you know, I have a lot of support everywhere, and all my grades are Bs and As, and I know what I'm doing. But there are other, the other, other, other students that for many different reasons get to a point where they say, "Okay, I don't, I don't really know what I'm doing, and I'm going through a lot of issues in my life," you know? Many different issues. And so how do you identify? I know this is a lot of different questions, but I have a lot of different things in my head right now. So, but how do you identify the students that are not being as successful? How do you help them so that they're not left behind? Because I'm pretty sure a lot of them are left behind towards the end. I'm a high school teacher, so I kind of know, you know, I've seen it. I've seen the college and career situation in the classroom. And there are times when I wonder, you know, are the kids actually getting this? Do they actually understand how this work? Do they actually know what they're doing with this? So that's why I'm wondering how that works here in Bloomington. What do we do to help them so that no one is left behind? Also, my other question is, what kind of opportunities do they also find outside of the school district that kind of complements what they're talking about in the classroom? What they're hearing and what they're doing and what they're working on in the plan? And my last question is, in reference to parent engagement, do you, do we share this kind of information with all of our parents? You know, and when I say all of our parents, I'm including parents from all different communities, different backgrounds. Do we help them understand this? Because I know it is different when I understand, you know, like Mr. Bernstein, when I understand about the Personal Growth Plan, and I know what my student is doing in, with this plan, and where they are in versus when I really have no idea does this even, even exist, you know, this thing? So I know it's a lot of different questions, but, thank you.
Sure. So, great questions, really great questions. I, I will say that I, I think our personal growth plans will continue to mature and evolve as we go. So this is our first year of full implementation, and we've learned a lot since the beginning. One of the things that is really nice about the Personal Growth Plan and about having a, a system for students to input their, their interests or for students to be able to, or for us to be able to monitor, students be able to monitor their progress is that we can then pull information out of the system to say, who are those students who maybe aren't engaging? And, and meet, you know, connect with them, counselors can connect with them. We found out that there was a handful of students who hadn't logged into Naviance. So our P G P implementer was able to reach out to their advisory teachers to say, "Hey, can you have a conversation with the student about why they haven't engaged?" And then if, if the advisory teacher doesn't have any luck, then the P G P implementer can work with the student to, to try to help uncover because, you know, if, if that student needs some additional support. I think Andy could speak to all of the learning supports that we have in, in our system to help students probably better than I could. But I'll touch on the parent piece as well. So we're, we've been working with the Communications Department to try to get information out to parents through, you know, emails and voicemails and our Blackboard system to connect with them. I spent some time with O E department last week, training them on all of the, on P G P and the tools that we're utilizing. And it's really exciting because they're holding a retreat, I think it's, this weekend. And so I've been helping them to, to develop some activities. So they'll be working with a variety of students, and I know that they have, they work with a lot of parent groups as well. They gave me some great feedback on a few pieces that, as a matter of fact, one, we had imported from someone else and found out that it was interpreted incorrectly. So, so we're reaching out to that team as well to help us. Did I answer all your questions?
Yeah, and I think it would definitely be very helpful if we can find ways, different ways of hearing from the students. I'll be very curious to know from them what they think about the Personal Growth Plan because they are, they are the people that are actually working on this, so.
Yeah, I'll just make one more comment about that. I think what we're finding is that as students engage in them, they're, they're starting to talk with one another about, "Hey, this is really helpful." Especially the seniors, I think, were most reluctant. But then once they got in and got involved and started doing the activities, they're like, "This is very helpful." And so word spreads. So it'll take a while.
Okay.
But, yeah.
I think that's the, the benefit of starting in, in middle school with sixth-grade students, that I think as a, as a 10, 11-year-old student, you don't know what you don't know. And to provide a structure as a sixth grader about, this is what our commitment to you to make sure that, not that you're going to graduate, we have a really good graduation rate, but what are you going to do in four years? What are you going to do? Let's help you plan that. I think you're a high school teacher, you know that. There are a lot of kids who just kind of wander around the forest. And at the end, they go, "Oh, my goodness, I'm going to graduate, what am I going to do?" And what we hope to do is put structure in place, working with O E E, working with counselors, so that there is a structure for students to be able not, to not have to necessarily wander around the forest to figure out what they want to do, but instead have some kind of plan. I think the second part of that, Director Corman, is also knowing, teaching the students how to navigate the system so that they can explore, like we heard Kristen Donnelly talk about. Those students can explore their careers on their own without us necessarily holding their hand. We might be over their shoulder, but teaching them that skill that they're going to need for the rest of their life is a, is a good part of this as well.
Yeah, thank you. And I know that, you know, we do all the best that we can do, and I know that the teachers work hard. But I'm pretty sure that we're working together with teachers, staff members, counselors, the people that are helping us in the schools to try to identify which ones of those, the students that are really needing that little extra push. Because I know, you know, especially at this age, you start losing motivation towards the end. And, and that's part of the reason why you end up not really picking something or really even looking forward to do something after high school is that lack of motivation, too. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, you have the, the survey results from ninth graders. Did you get any information from 10th to 11th, 12th graders? And what were their?
We didn't get any information from the upperclassmen. It was a smaller, it was a smaller window with just a couple of activities, so. And it was relatively late in the year. But we will be, we will be pulling more information this year.
Okay, because really I wish this, a presentation came when our student reps were here to see, to get some of their, their input. So, because this topic came up in one of our student advisory meetings, and they're more upperclassmen, and they, I would say, weren't too favorable of their opinions of the P G P, that they didn't really see the benefit of it at their journey and their education. That maybe if they were in middle school, they would have, you know, found it more useful, but they didn't in 12th grade.
Yeah, and that's what we've, I mean, we've really tried to work on our messaging to seniors because the, the activities really are truly designed for their grade specifics. So if you look at what the senior activities are, they're about, you know, entering your college information into Naviance so that it can match you with scholarships and learning about the, how to interpret your award letter when you, that you receive from your college and making that transition. We're building a video archive of alumni first-year experiences. So they really are designed for, to be applicable to seniors. But I think a number of the seniors, and even the ones, I think, that were on the committee, they just were kind of resistant, so really didn't give it a chance. And when they actually got in and started doing those activities, the response was better. But absolutely, student voice is very important. And, and we need to, we need to hear what the students have to say and really make it a positive experience for them and an engaging experience for them so that they'll want to, you know, participate in the activities.
So we have some students here. I don't know if any, I've seen lots of body language from students over there. Now if anyone has anything that they want to say about these P G Ps? Now is your time?
I think they know it.
This will be the time to do it. These are the people in charge of it, so come to the podium.
Something positive?
Well, can be positive or negative.
Positive or negative, as long as it's respectful?
Yep, there we go.
All right.
There we go.
One taker. So just state your name again. You already introduced yourself once, but say, state your name.
My name is Scott Brar. And on behalf of like 12 or 13 people from Jefferson, we don't like the P G P. We think it's ineffective and kind of somewhat useless at this point since we're about three months from being out the door and in college. We think that, you know, it's not a good idea for seniors to do it. It just becomes more of an annoyance and something that some of us get behind in.
Yeah, hi, I'm Alicia, and I'm also from Jefferson. And just to kind of like add on to that, I feel like it's a really good idea for people that aren't seniors just because, like, I went in and talked to someone from the, like, Career and College Center at Jefferson, and I was talking with her about scholarships. And she told me about how that, like, next year's seniors will be able to, when they're applying for colleges, will be able to look and see, like, what, someone last year, like us as seniors, had this grade point average and this A C T score and got accepted into this college. But this person with this GPA and A C T score didn't get into this college. So like, it's a, I feel like that's like good information for them, but just like for us, I don't know, like, I'm filling out stuff about, like, I'm doing, I was doing P G P activities about how to apply for colleges after I already sent in my applications. And I'm doing stuff about, like, the scholarship stuff after I've already applied for a bunch of them, or I've already found some. So like, I think it's a really good idea, but just like as a senior, I'm doing, I'm like filling out information about stuff I've already done. So I don't know, at this point, it just kind of feels a little redundant.
So, so the timing is important.
Yeah, like, if we had done it earlier, or like, if I had done this as a junior, it would have helped, but,
Sure.
I don't know, I feel like right now, I'm not really getting a lot out of it, but it's a good idea.
Yeah, so, so that's great feedback. And you spoke about entering college information and about, it's, it's actually called scatter plots, which is something we can turn on in our Naviance system once we have years worth of senior data. So you guys entering your college, where you apply to college, will really help future seniors and juniors to be able to see where they might be likely to get accepted. So that's why it's really valuable for you to participate. But we really appreciate your feedback, so, thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Thanks for being brave.
Happens when you stay late.
There you go. Yeah, they make you come up and talk.
So we, we.
And that sort of echoed, when we had our student advisory council, that sort of echoed their sentiment.
Another one in the back.
Oh, is there another one?
We, we knew that, as we were beginning implementation, that this would be the feedback. I mean, you have seniors who are like one foot out the door, but as Cheryl talked about, their data is still important for us as we, as we pay it forward, if you will.
We have one more?
Um, yeah, my name's Abby Ron, I'm from Jefferson, and I just had a question. Are you guys actually going to hold back our diplomas if we don't complete the P G P activities? Because that's what we've been told.
The, the, in the previous administration, the P G P, completing the P G P was a, a box you had to check to graduate. We've modified what it means to complete that, though.
So we still have to do the, whatever that is, like the four or seven or whatever? We have to do those?
It's four.
Four to walk?
Yeah.
Thank you, is there anything else?
So I, I just want to clarify what I think it was Abby was talking about. So there are a series, as Cheryl talked about, of activities that need to be done. We are trying to be responsive to the voice that you heard tonight about, you know, one foot out the door. So working with both high school administrations, we cut the activities for seniors to four activities for them to complete for graduation. So that's what she was referring to there.
Four instead of seven, you said?
I think it's actually more than, more than that, but yeah.
It's four activities plus entering their college information and responding to a senior survey, so. And the first activity is just really entering your college applications into Naviance. And the other three are around financial literacy and financial aid.
I just want to reiterate that this is a pilot program, and we're piloting it. So I want to thank, you know, all the students who have, you know, been involved in this, as well as administration and the schools. You know, there's always going to be some bumps when we start a new program. So I thank you for your patience and, and your honest feedback. Thanks for coming up and telling us what you think of this. And that's it.
One last thing, as long as the students are staying, thank you for staying. I want to echo what Mr. Bennett said.
to echo what Mr. Bennett said. We appreciate your input, and you don't have to just come to a board meeting to share your thoughts with us. You can always send us an email. We're always available. So you can send your thoughts at any time, and we like to know what you're thinking, which is why we enjoy having you here for our meetings. But it doesn't have to be just tonight. So if you think of something on the way home or tomorrow or whatever, when you're at, at lunch and you're going, boy, I wish I would have said that, go ahead and send it to us. But send it to Tom first.
Yeah, and you, you don't have to look us, look us up each individually. If you just send it to schoolboard@isd271.org, it goes to all of us plus the superintendent. So that's the easy way to do it. I think that's it. All right. Thank you. Thank you for presenting.
Thank you.
And I believe that brings us, because we're skipping the memorandum, down to Educational Solutions in Research and Technology LLC Consulting Agreement.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves a consulting service agreement with Educational Solutions and Research and Technology LLC between the dates of February fourteen, twenty seventeen, and January twentieth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Hello again. Chair Oliva, School Board Members, Superintendent Fujitaki. I am excited to be in front of you to talk about this agreement. I've shared with you in the past, but I'll give you a recap. One of the things that we want to get accomplished coming into Learning Supports was, was to have an equity vision for our school district. I would say that we, in the past, have never had an equity vision. We've had fifteen, seventeen, twenty different sites doing fifteen, seventeen, twenty different things, all in, in, in good faith, things that needed to be done. But as I came on and started working closely with Dina Wade Ardley, we talked about, there, there should be some kind of vision for equity in our school district. We should be doing something that points, all the vectors point in the right direction, instead of just one-offs. And so we came up with a three- to five-year plan about what we want to get accomplished. I know we've talked about that a little bit at board meetings in the past. It would start with central leadership, some conversations with, with central leadership about what it means to be culturally competent, what it means to be culturally responsive. Those conversations have started. We had a meeting last week where we had some training. It starts, started with you, as we meet before some board meetings, most board meetings, and I get to foster conversations with you about the same topic. And I think it sends a tremendous signal to our, our employees and our students and our families that leadership is going first to become better versed in what it means to be culturally competent and responsive. What you have in front of you, or what, what you're seeing in your, in your packet, is a contract for step two. And so we, we love the fact that we, we pride ourselves and that we're a data-driven school district. And so we make a lot of decisions based on data, and when it comes to equity, it should be no different. And so what you have in front of you is an agreement with Dr. Mohammed Khalifa. Dr. Khalifa is a researcher from the University of Minnesota. He's also an associate professor there, who we're going to contract with, we'd like to contract with, to do an equity audit of our school district. So, you know, what are the strengths of our school district in and around equity, and what are some areas that we need to grow in? And so the comprehensive audit will be administered, and then we'll take the data. Dr. Khalifa will start with the data that we have already. We have behavior data, we have HR data, we have achievement data, and look for trends and things that we could be celebrating and things we need to get better at. Then the equity audit will come. Parents will be involved in that. Students will be involved in that. We just talked about student voice. Of course, teachers and all the employee groups, central administration, to get a snapshot or a version of what, what are our strengths and weaknesses in and around equity. Second to that, then we take that information and we, we plan professional development for our staff members, so that we make sure that we are, we are doing the due diligence we need to do, to have all of the people who are in front of kids or interacting with kids or part of our organization, who have the understanding of what it means and the ability to be culturally competent for all, for all people that we might interact with in the Bloomington Public Schools. So we're excited about this. As I said before, one of the highlights of this that, that intrigued me is that Dr. Khalifa is a researcher. So as you look through the packet, he's got research questions that he, that he wants to get at. It's not just something, a bunch of activities, if you will. There are answers to questions that, that we are looking for that will help us go forward with this.
Andy, thanks for sharing this. I think this is, this is awesome. This will be really interesting to see how this, just to see the results. I'm, I'm, I'm really interested in, in the project. So I appreciate the energy and the effort behind this.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea, and I'm glad that you're, you're heading it. I think you're going to do a great job with this. I'm glad that you included all of our people, all the people within the organization. Sometimes people think, well, when you're doing cultural competency, and you just need to look at the teachers, the people that are in front of students, when really, needs to be everybody, from the school board, all the way through every, you know, finance department, everybody that works here needs to, need to look at an equity audit and, and look at, you know, look through the lens of equity. So I think it's a good idea, and I'm, like Dick said, I can't wait to see the results. So thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
I went first. Anybody, anybody opposed? No? Okay. It, this resolution passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that brings us to a bid award for mechanical improvements at Poplar Bridge Elementary.
Mr. Chair?
Be the long ones.
All right. Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts the following twenty bids for mechanical improvements at Poplar Bridge Elementary School. And I will ask that they be as listed on this resolution, and authorizes the administration to enter into contracts with the above vendors to accomplish this work.
Second.
Chair Oliva, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. This is the fifth year of our long-range financial work that we've been doing at schools. The first year was Westwood, second year was Indian Mounds and Valley View Elementary, Oak Grove. Last year was Washburn, and this year will be Poplar Bridge. It's, it's a project that we work with Wold Architecture and Kraus Anderson to make sure that the program is running both economical and also with proper efficiencies for the future.
Any questions? I'll turn it over to Director Bennett.
Oh, yes. Well, first of all, I'm glad to see that all these twenty contractors are all Minnesota companies. As you know, I always like to see our, our tax dollars staying local. My, my question is, I'm looking at some of these bid awards, and some of them, we only got one bid. Were there any of them that you felt were too high, that you wanted to go off for, to re, go for a rebid or rep publication, or were they within parameters, even though there's only one bid?
They were all at parameters. Actually, the overall bids were about $700,000 lower than what we were projected.
Oh, well, there we go. Okay, that's the only question. Thanks.
Mr. Chair? Thanks, Rod. The, I'm, I'm assuming that this work is going to be done over summer?
Correct. We'll start, actually, the kitchen work, we'll start the earliest. It'll be done the last week of, the last two weeks of school.
Okay.
And then we'll start the rest. Some of the stuff in the boiler room will also start early also. We try to get ahead of the game on those pieces that we can.
Good. And there, and there, all of our, who's the general on this? Is it Wold? Is somebody, the general?
No, there is, there's no general on it.
Okay, so they're, they're all confident they'll be able to get it done and wrapped up and.
Kraus Anderson oversees the management of the project.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? It carries, and that brings us to number six. Twenty sixteen, seventeen budget and mid-year budget adjustments.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves adjusting the twenty sixteen, seventeen budget for all funds by increasing revenues by $2,142,395 and increasing expenditures by $2,345,237.
Your second?
Second.
Turn it over to Rod Zifkiewicz again.
This is the update of the budget. The original budget was adopted by the board back in June. What we do is, in the process of preventing, presenting you information tonight, to make a decision about updating the budget, we are looking for action tonight. So if you overlook at it, we have the proposed budget adjustments. A lot of the things that have been added to our original budget that we need the changes, our, our audit, updates in enrollment. As you remember, we had a, a increase in enrollment this year. And then any legislative or financial changes, one of the ones with, within the budget this year was the early childhood grant. So what we look at, as we look at prior year carryovers, if there's projects that were completed last year, we carry over those dollars to the next year. Updated information, as I mentioned, revenue, additional grants, and then anything else that is being adjusted, actual salaries, compensation, actual teaching staff, the rest. So we have our group of funds. We have our capital and deferred maintenance fund, which has capital in it, operating capital, our alt facilities, which we just talked about with the last resolution, construction, and then capital projects. We have our debt service, which is our bonds and interest payments, our insurances and internal services, which is our dental, medical, our OPEP trust and the debt for that, then our vacation and severance, and then our, our three operating funds of food service, community service. And as you remember, last, this year is the first year that we've combined both general fund and transportation combined. So if we look at operating capital, last year's audit ended at a $5.3 million fund balance. Some of those projects that we were planning on doing last year, we, we have not done them. We moved some of those over to this, this year. Also, we were able to, what we try to do is projects that we can do within the alt facility budget. We try to do that as much as possible because this capital budget can be used more for the educational realm versus the, I mean, the alt facilities, which is more of the building itself. So if you look at where we are, we, we show that revenue has increased about $226,000. Expenditures dropped down about $100,000. The net impact is an additional $125,000. So still a spend down within this fund of about $704,000 this year for ending fund balance of $4.4 million, or $4.6 million. We go to alt facilities. Alt facilities, the beginning fund balance of fifteen, sixteen, you see 22 million. If you remember, we're in, at the next board meeting, we'll be selling alt facility bonds. We, we sell those bonds. It's kind of starts off the balance for two years, and then we kind of, it, we use it over the two-year period of time. So we ended at a fund balance of $11.7 million. We have just a small change in revenue between the two years, showing that we'll have an ending fund balance at the end of this next year of about $2.6 million. Capital projects levy, this is our, our technology and security levy. Part of the reason for coming in a little better this year than we, we were projected was that we moved the, the district office in Oak Grove Middle Pond and Southwood out of here, and we didn't adjust the budget for that. So that's why you see kind of a greater carryover of fund balance. You see that as we move forward, the extra million dollars in expenditures covering those projects. So we'll, ending of fund balance for the end of sixteen, seventeen is $1.2 million. Debt service, really no change. We ended last year at $675,000. If you look at where we were projecting it to be, we had a $733. Not, not much of a difference there. Revenue, slight change, and overall, ending at $748,000. Our dental fund, dental fund itself, last year, came in about $51,000 better than revenues over expenditures. We were projecting about a $40,000 spend down this year, based on the numbers through December. We feel that we're right at that minus $40,000. Medical, ended last year's medical with a fund balance of $5.5 million, which was about $600,000 better than what we projected. Looking at the net effect of, from what we budgeted to what is actually going to be is about $100,000, $100,000 worse than what we were expecting. Revenues are down slightly, expenses are, are down also. So we're looking at a net improvement this year of $460,000 to end up at the end of this year's fund balance of just over $6 million. And which will be coming to the board, I believe, in the latter part of March, would be the rates for the next two years for health insurance. Our OPEP trust, looking at it, ended last year just under $15 million. We didn't spend down as much. We're looking at pretty much what we're expecting for this next year, to be about a $725,000 spend down, to end up at $14 million at the end. Again, this is a requirement of our obligations for retirees into the future for the health insurance, health insurance payments and severance payments throughout. This is, we, we, we sold these bonds in 2009. We're actually refinancing them at the next board meeting. This is so that we don't have to use general fund dollars to pay for those expenses. This is the debt on those same bonds that we sold back in 2009. And looking at overall, not really any significant change between what was budgeted and what we're projecting to end at, ending fund balance of about $200,000. Internal service fund, really kind of a flat this last year. We, we, part of our budget adjustments, we planned on taking $400,000 into the general fund budget to reduce some cuts. So we're going from the four point, $6.8 million down to $6.4 million. And we project that both the following year and seventeen, eighteen, seeing the same adjustment of spend down of $400,000 in this fund also. As we get to the operating funds, food service, food service ended last year pretty much as a break even. We're showing that the shortfall for this year was originally budgeted at $106,000. With some adjustments to revenue and updates, we're looking at closer to $123,000. So it'll be just over $1 million in fund balance at the end of sixteen, seventeen. Community services, showed that ending fund balance last year of a little over $3 million. Some changes in revenue and expenses, pretty much a, what happened is we, we moved some of the general fund expenditures, based on the, the grant that we got for, for the pre-K. And because that dollars, as you'll see in the general fund, the general fund dollar, or revenue is up, and also expenditures are up, it's because we've moved those dollars over to, they have to be coded to the general fund itself. So it's looking at the ending fund balance for community services to be about $3 million. So it's looking at the ending fund balance for community services to be about $3.6 million. General fund and transportation, we ended last year at a spend down of right around $3 million, ending fund balance of $13 million. If you look at our original budget was $1,092, and you see the revenue change was $2.4 million. The $2.4 million is based on the increase in enrollment, also the additional revenue of both Bloomington and Richfields pre-K funding, that grant that came in for both those, that was also in those dollars there. Expenditures were the expenditures for those programs, and then also any other adjustments that we have made this year to update based on numbers that we budgeted originally. So net difference of about $21,000, $22,000 better. Overall, saying a spend down this year of just under a million dollars to end this year at $12.1 million. Questions?
Mr. Chair? Rod, thanks for presenting this. A lot of information to digest. I just wanted to say a quick thanks for the, well, for all the information, but specifically our self-funded medical and dental. That's, that can be a tough one to maintain. It looks like it continues to hold solid. So appreciate the energy and the effort put into that one.
Well, I think it's the, it's the energy and effort of the whole insurance committee. I mean, they've been committed to that since back in, I mean, when we started it back in 2010. I mean, it's been a work of a whole group. It's not just been one or two people, it's been the whole group.
Yeah, well, I'll let you pass that on. I assume they've all gone to bed by now and they're not watching, but wouldn't you talk to them?
Don and I are here.
Oh, there you go. Thanks for your hard, hard work and effort.
Any other questions? It's a lot of information. Thank you very much for presenting this. And I guess that's it. There was a resolution, was there? Oh, there is a resolution. No, we gotta, we gotta vote on this. Yeah, I'm one of those people, you know, I didn't eat dinner tonight, and so I'm just, I'm not focused, I'm not concentrating.
Did you eat a nut roll?
Yeah, I did have a salted nut roll from the back office, so I just have sugar, that's all I have. So I apologize for all of my mistakes this evening. So, all those in favor of this budget adjustment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any carries? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, if I do this right, we are at board member reports. Who would like to go first?
I'll go ahead and start, I guess, from the go-around. So, let's see, I got a list here, so I'll try to stick to my list. So, the calendar committee met on February 2nd, and we are starting the process of the 2018-19 calendar. And we're, it's good that we're starting early so that we can fully vet the calendar, get a lot of the feedback, because we have no, we don't have a hard deadline. We're trying to hopefully have it done by the end of the school year, but, you know, in calendars past, it's always, you know, January, so we start getting calls from parents and emails, and when's the calendar coming out? So it's nice that we're starting early, and so we can have a more thorough discussion about it. And then also, on February 3rd, I went with the crew from Kennedy, the Kennedy's Equity Team, and I was filling in for Dick Bergstrom, and they had a overcoming racism 2017 Equity Oriented Leadership Institute at MDE. And it was an all-day opportunity, and it was quite an experience. You know, as board members, we kind of look at equity at a district-wide perspective, so it was nice to see the things that they're doing at Kennedy, and they're doing some really good things there. And one of the things that I found was interesting was the principal shared with me that their AP classes have increased, and students of color have increased by 70% in the last five years. And the grades for those AP classes that the students are getting have remained the same or gotten, or even gotten better. So that was a good thing to hear, that we're reaching out to more students of color to get into our AP classes. Let's see, on February 8th, was it at Normandale Hills? They had their rally for the Read-A-Thon, and those are always fun events. And just to give you some numbers of what Normandale Hills did, so as a school, they read for 330,000 minutes, and they raised close to $17,000 in the two weeks Read-A-Thon. And they had about 85% of the students participated in the Read-A-Thon. And part of their challenge, if they met their goal, was that Dr. Valmuth would have to dress up as Mrs. Doubtfire and sing the school song with the mouth guard in. And I think he missed his calling. He was wonderful. I mean, he brought down the house, the kids were loving it. It was a lot of fun to see, and, you know, Director Bergstrom was there, so I'm sure he'll tell you how much fun he had there as well. And let's see, also, on the 8th, we had the Health Associates Negotiation Session. It was the first session, and we have another one coming this Wednesday. And on the 9th, I went to the Early Childhood Parent Advisory Council meeting, and they had a Valentine's Dance the following night, but I wasn't able to go to that. But I'm sure it was wonderful. Their theme was Prince and Princesses. So my daughter wouldn't have liked it because she doesn't like princesses, so I'm sure.
She goes Batman.
She could. Sure, the three-year-olds and four-year-olds loved it. And also, on the 9th, we had a policy committee meeting with the chair and myself and Director Storm, and we reviewed 12 different policies that will come before you the next board meeting. We had some questions, and to send back some stuff to administration for them to rework, and there's even one that we didn't agree on, if you can believe that. So that'll be interesting at next meeting. And that is all I got, so that concludes my report.
The Bloomington United for Youth had their annual recognition of students and groups of students and adults, and of course, I didn't bring the whole list with me. Dwight Geisler from the Rotary was recognized, I believe it was Oak Grove Presbyterian Church was recognized as a group of adults, and the topple group from Jefferson. And there were two, a student from Kennedy and a student from Jefferson, and I'm sorry.
David Palmquist from Kennedy.
Thank you. And there was a young lady also. So they, there's a lot of good work being done in the district there. And I also want to let everybody know that the 100th birthday party is coming, Friday, May 19th, at the Bloomington DoubleTree Hotel. And there's a special deal, if you sign up early, early birth through February 28th, it's $50 per person. And there will be dinner, dancing, live band, so I'm hoping everyone will come.
It's free for board members, right?
Uh, no. Just to benefit the Education Foundation of.
Nothing's free for board members.
That's all I got.
Okay. All right, I had a chance to attend the College and Career Academy Open House, and I heard some great positive comments from some community members that were visiting that I don't think had been there before, it was their first time, so that was good to hear. Also, in the community ed building, I did a daytime visit, and I spent a large amount of time in the Transition Program Plus program, and enjoyed spending time with a student where I could really see how he uses assistive technology to communicate. And he was showing me pictures on his phone, but then using an assistive device to press what that picture was that verbally spoke for him, so he could tell me with his device what the things were on the phone, and had showed me recent vacation that he had been on. So it was really great to see all of those pieces coming together, and he was able to communicate with me. I also attended the variety show, the rally, and the kindergarten registration at Olson Elementary. I would say the highlight of the rally, the rally is where they're recognizing students, I guess, for their great behavior, and awards are given out, that type of thing is part of what they do, is part of their PBIS at the rally. But then, another thing that they like to do there is certain students and staff are selected to participate in their minute to win it at the end. And this time, the minute to win it was the staff members that participated had, I don't know, shower cap or something to protect their hair, and then their head was covered in, I think, whipped cream. And then the students got to throw cheese balls at their head to see how many cheese balls they could make stick to their head in that time. And let me tell you, the students thought that was quite funny. There was a lot of laughter and a great community building there when they were doing their activity. And then, of course, they had a limited time, whoever got the most in their minute won it, so. Also, I just wanted to say a little bit about kindergarten registration there. There was so many other staff that are not kindergartners that came to spend their time that evening there. There was teachers and staff with the little kindergartners while their parents were in the meeting with other staff. There were people in the, you know, office dancer, there was just people all over that building that came to spend their evening for these new families, so I just thought it was wonderful. The presentation by the principal and the kindergarten teachers, I sat through it and listened to with the parents, and, you know, it almost made me wish I had a kindergartner again. So, it was great. Also, I had a chance to visit the pre-K program at Valley View Elementary that used to be my building, that I used to visit there, so I went back to visit. And, you know, it was great to see that, you know, in February already, how far those kids have come, how hard their teachers and the students have been working to get them ready for kindergarten. So I was pretty impressed with some of the stuff I saw going on, and things I heard the students tell me when I was there. So, that's it, thank you.
Go to the side.
Just really quick, I'm just pleased to inform that we have our first meeting with the Bloomington Adulthood Council, and it's just a wonderful group of people representing the school community, the Bloomington community, teachers, parents, et cetera. So it was, it was a good meeting. I think the most, I would say that the most impressive thing about this group of people is that it's very diverse. It's a very diverse group of people, and I'm really, really pleased to see that type of diversity at all levels, all different kinds of diversity in our group. And also, well, we're just starting with the group, so there's a lot more that we need to work on and to talk about, so, yeah, there will be more coming. Thank you.
All right. Well, the reason that Tom filled in for me was because I was double-booked. I was at the Future Leaders Winter Business Conference. This is a conference that's held by the Bloomington Chamber. They partner with Bloomington Public Schools, Debbie Belfry does some of the logistics there. And we get juniors and seniors from both high schools that come for, it's a whole day, so they get there around 8:00, maybe a little before, and they're done, and on the bus 1:15, so that's their school day. The winter conference had three different presentations. There was cultural diversity, physical adversity, and then role models versus real models. And what they're, just quickly, what they do is there was, I think there was 13, 14 round tables, there were six, seven kids at a table, and then there's two, they try to have two adults at each table. And these adults are volunteers from our business community. So the gentleman that owns the Big Frog, Great Frog t-shirt shop was there, there, I think there was somebody there from Applebee's, Kristen Donnelly was there. Just, it didn't matter what business, they sign up and they volunteer their time. And there are scenarios that we go through at the tables, and then the kids discuss them, and then the adults will add, hopefully, a seasoned adult perspective to, did you think of this, did you think of that? You know, how would you, if you have this information, how would you respond to that? And one of the questions I like to ask these kids, this is the, I think this is the fourth year I've been doing this, one of the questions I like to ask them is, why did you come? And they're all really candid, and they say, well, they look both ways and say, wow, I get a day off of school. Okay, that's honest. And then at the end of the program, did you guys learn anything? Yeah, this, I didn't know this, I didn't know that. You mean, you have to sit up straight when you're in an interview, and you can't be on your cellphone when you're in, that kind of thing? So the program has merit, the kids really get a lot out of it, I believe. And it really is interesting and nice to see our business community get back in that way. So that's why I had missed that opportunity, but thanks for filling in, Tom. Also had an opportunity to attend the Poplar Bridge STEAM event. Just amazed to see all the different presentations. After I sat down and had my pizza and potato chips and pop, or water, whatever I had for dinner, you go to the different rooms, and then they have their 3D models of presentations. And one of the ones that caught my attention was a student had put together, this student was talking about the solar system, and the student had put together a model of all the planets and the sun, and somewhere, somewhere, they found a face of a sun that was smiling and it had shades on. So I had to take a picture of that and share that on a social media page. But it was really, really interesting to see how these kids worked the topic that they were given. They got to choose them, and they put all the energy and the effort into them, and they were there in the rooms explaining them to you. And it was just really, really neat to see. Talked to one of the teachers there, this teacher had changed careers. They were into physical training, something like that, if I'm remembering the story right, stopped to have a family, came back, wanted to give back to the community, thought the best way to give back was to go into teaching, was with a different district for three years, and came to our district, and of course, loves our district. And was just, you could see the energy and the passion coming out of this teacher. And they stayed late, they were there to answer questions, they weren't put off that a board member came, they weren't necessarily upset with me showing up in their room, and they were anxious to share their passion with me. And I could see that in every room that I went to. So it was just really, really fun to get to those things. Also had a chance, this is the third year in a row, to go to the Intermediate District 917's Winter Program. And this is held over at Gideon Pond Elementary, it's over in Burnsville. This is the deaf and hard-of-hearing component for the 917, and they have a wing. So when you walk in the front door, you turn to the right, you go past the office, and there is an elementary wing there. And some of these kids are profoundly deaf, some of them have cochlear implants, others are, have some issues. But the program was Sneezy and the Snowman from Head to Toe by Eric Carl, I believe, it's a big gorilla, and then Beauty and the Beast. And one of them was narrated, another one, the little kids got up and just sort of acted it out, and there was somebody saying who was what. And then the last one, they spoke. And at each one of the events, they have somebody doing sign language to help translate what's going on up on stage. It's an hour-long deal. Afterwards, there's cookie and punch and some popcorn. And it's just amazing to see these kids do what they do. And the thing that strikes me the most is, when they get up there, you forget that this is deaf and hard-of-hearing. If you can block out the fact that there's a translator there, these kids are just regular kids, just like you would see on any playground, having a blast, they're nervous because they have to remember their lines, and they have to walk over here, and they have to do all this. And it's just amazing to see these kids get up there and do what they do. They only practiced for two weeks. That was the first question I asked, because they looked really polished. No, no, you only have two weeks, we gotta get to our class, our lessons, and they sort of wedged the practicing in between lessons and learning. So it was a ton of fun. And also, I would strongly suggest that if you're going over to, say, for instance, the Transition Program to buy Valentine's gifts, which I did, I would strongly suggest that you get there before Don gets there, because when I got there, most of that, most of that stuff you had picked through, and, but I stopped over to the Transitions Program and got some Valentine's. Program and, and got some Valentine's stuff. I got, they made some roses, where they put two Hershey Kisses together, then wrapped some red cellophane around it and put it on a stick, and put it in a harp-shaped vase, and that was, that was my wife's Valentine's present. So, it's the gift that keeps on giving because she can pull it apart when she wants and eat the chocolate roses, so. That's, that's my, my report.
Oh, she's not watching, Dick, because Valentine's Day hasn't happened yet. She'll know.
Well, well, she, she can't eat it until tomorrow, but I've already given it to her.
Okay, so, I guess for me, I did go to the Policy Committee, Legislative Committee, and the Advocacy Council Meeting. But I wanted to point out the Board Student Advisory Council Meeting, and how excited I am that they met tonight without us. Because that's exactly what I was pushing for and hoping that this committee would become, is a student-run, student-led, it's student initiatives, it's what they want to do. And we're here to just give guidance and some mentoring, but it really is their group, and it's their voice, and it's, for the past three years, any time we would get the high school students together, they'd say, we wish we had more ways to collaborate with each other. And this really, I think, is the beginning of bridging that gap between the two high schools. And so, I'm extremely excited that, I have no idea what they talked about, but I'm really, I'm extremely excited that they were able to, to do that, then just on their own, planned it, set their, created their own agenda, met, and I'm sure we'll get an, an update from our two student reps at the next board meeting. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that and make sure everyone was aware that that occurred this evening. So, I'll pass it on to Superintendent Report.
Right, thank you. First, congratulations to Coach Chuck Bobowski and the Kennedy-Jefferson Wrestling Team for winning the conference championship for the first time in 31 years.
Wow.
And to strengthen our relationship and to show our support for those Latino families and students, I'll be attending the Latino Parent Association Meeting this week. This will be the third consecutive meeting I'm attending, and we're making great progress in working on projects together. Next thing is Legislature, this is their sixth week in session. We're coming up on some important dates. The beginning of March, the state economic forecast will be released. The leaders are going to set committee target goals based upon that forecast, and we're going to be watching what they give to the education committees in both the House and Senate, because those committees will then set their priorities as far as funding of schools. So, we're tracking that. We're also tracking bills. There's very few policy bills, I hope, we hope our Innovation Zone Bill gets introduced and heard by the committees, and we're coming up on a important date, the beginning of March, about March 10th is the last day bills can be heard. And they have a very aggressive timeline this year. They're hearing everything much earlier than in prior years, because they said they don't want to have a rear occurrence of what happened during last session, where it was all last minute, and nobody read bills, and everybody kept moving things along, so they want to move things a lot earlier. So, we're tracking a number of bills. One is that, a bill about the voluntary pre-K funding. Dr. Heistad testified again today at the Senate Education Finance Committee, and the Chair, Senator Carla Nelson, she expressed her appreciation for Dr. Heistad showing up and sharing some high data, hard data about pre-K results. So, that concludes my report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any other business to come before the Board? If there are none, I will call this meeting adjourned.
You can hit so hard.
Well, yeah, it was grabbing.